Calling this meeting, it's order or call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Here.
DePena. Councilmember Graziano.
Here.
Councilmember Nittor, not be attending this evening. Councilmember Robel.
Here.
Strumalberg.
President.
Mayor Melvin.
Here. Pledge allegiance?
Let's play the reasons of the Constitution of America. To the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as all things.
Okay, everybody, report to the manager.
Oh, sunshine, John, ready?
Sunshine.
Pursuant to the reclamers of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in Thursday, November 3rd, 2022 additions of the Bellevue Times and Star Letter. A copy to annual meeting notice has been posted on the Bellevue Town Hall bulletin board and copies on the municipal books.
Report to the manager.
Good evening, everyone. Relatively brief tonight, have a nice quiet two weeks. As you can tell, at our last council meeting, we were talking about the warm weather and street sweeping and all that good stuff. And then I think the next day, we had rain, sleet, and snow. But I think it's safe to say that the, hopefully, snow season is behind us. Started the process of transitioning between winter equipment, spring equipment, getting our fields ready, things of that nature. On Monday, April 4th, will be our first official sweeper day. The sweeper will be out between now and April 4th, but we will not be enforcing the alternate street parking. So no one will get a ticket prior to that. So certainly, the weather did take a turn for the better. We'll get the sweeper out and start working on that. A bit of good news for some people in the audience, but PSENG has confirmed that they will be installing a light in the lot on Washington Avenue. I know there's been a topic of conversation, but at least I see where at least one person's smiling, maybe one and a half. So that's it. The, on tonight's agenda, just, we do have salary ordinances. I just, you know, in a general statement, just, we have negotiated. And I think, like to think that we've done a great job at negotiations. These increases for 20, they go, in some cases, they go back to 2020, in which we negotiated a 1% increase in 2020. In some cases, a 1% increase, in some cases, a 2.5% increase. But we also have settled with the public employees, police and fire, and police and fire will now take us to 2025. And that's an average of 2%. And the reason why I say that is because, obviously, when you can agree with the bargaining units, of course, what I would say long term, it helps the tools of when we forecast in our budgets. And I guess that's the best item, I will say. I know you've been hearing it. We are getting very, very close. We're sending out some invites for the Budget Committee next week. But we got our revenues in place, things of that nature. So I guess that's my report, certainly open for questions and concerns.
Any councilors have any questions for the manager based solely on this report?
Not on this report.
No, we see none. Any other questions then?
Yes. So, Mr. Manager.
Sir.
We've been getting a lot of calls regarding baseball practice. If you could, in our conversation, if we could put the fence up on the new turf field to where the baseball can use the turf field at all times, and it can be isolated for them so they can have practice whenever they need it, instead of rolling things on and off, that would be a plus for the children.
You and I will just go over it one more time so I understand exactly, but I think I got it.
Okay.
I think that's a relatively easy question.
Yeah, no, it's easy. And then I received in my mailbox today, on Fairway, people complaining about commercial vehicles overnight. So can we, manager, can you give this to? I see.
We see Deputy Chief Global in the back room, but "commercial vehicles on Fairway," is that it, sir?
Yes. Overnight, phones going out, there's parking spaces, so.
Got it.
Do you have a specific location or all streets?
Can I give this to you?
Yeah, I'll do it. You got it.
Okay.
Anybody else for the manager? For the mayor, very with me, I have a bunch of questions for the manager. Mr. Manager, I don't know you're gonna have most of the answer, you just want to take them down. I did want an update on, do we plan, and I saw an email very late today. Is there an Easter event date planned yet?
April 9th, which is a Saturday. There is a rain date of the following Saturday, which would be the day before Easter, April 16th. That is in front of the high school, what I call the front lawn. And that event is 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
Okay, thank you. I'm just gonna keep going down the list. I know you mentioned today that you had a meeting today with some Fairway residents. Who from the township was involved in that meeting?
Myself and town engineer Tom Harris.
Nobody from violations, nobody from zoning, nobody from flood planning?
No, I think after the fact, I realized I probably should have had Frank there. And Frank, we have a tentative site inspection scheduled for next week with Tom, Frank, and some of the residents.
Okay.
On call?
Yes, yes. Councilman Ravel did jump on the call for a brief period.
So Fairway, I sent you an email, there was some confusion at the Fairway Park, the hoops, did we clarify? Can we clarify that?
Yeah, not exactly sure, the best way to handle it. We were going with one and one.
Right.
One six foot for the, what we refer to as biddy basketball. One is the regulation ten foot, that's what we had. Then we had requests to have bolted and lowered for six foot, so there could be a full court biddy basketball. And then, of course, we have requests to have full court at 10. So I'm gonna need a couple of days to figure out if there's a compromise out there. Because clearly, if we go with the 10 foot, we're gonna upset the people that have been requesting for the biddy basketball. Obviously, if we go with the biddy basketball courts, we're going to, I guess, for better words, upset the residents that are asking for 10.
It's a difficult position, but I believe that you're in the master job.
I'm up to the task.
And, good chair, any reason why no one else was invited to a call or to the fence?
So, the, just the, the way the meeting took place today was, there was a request for the town engineer to be at tonight's meeting. And that request came from two residents. We asked the town engineer to be available tonight. This was about a week ago. He had already previously been scheduled to appear before, I think it's East Brunswick or another town that he represents. So less than a week ago, we knew that the town engineer couldn't be available tonight. So what we did was, for the people that requested to have Tom here tonight, we reached out to him and said, since Tom couldn't be here for, and he will be here at the next meeting if that helps, but since he couldn't be here tonight, we asked Tom, we asked the residents if they would like to meet with Tom prior to the next council meeting. The answer was yes. I don't think Councilman Ravel was invited by, I think he became aware of the call through residents in that area and called it.
Okay, just in the future, if one should know, we all should know, or vice versa.
Well, sometimes we know, sometimes we don't. Just like I'm seeing things on the agenda here that I didn't know anything about.
Something you want to address, Clark?
Nope, we'll talk about later.
So next on my, and I slid off a few things.
I'm sorry, take your time.
I know you mentioned Altamont side of street parking has now resumed. I had a question about that today.
Well, for alternate resumes on board.
So I know next, Ms. Clark, Madam Clark, for the next council meeting, I know that I already have Philpilot integration on, November 21 integration, February 22 integration, March 22 integration. I also want to add to that the status of credit card payments. That was supposed to be looped into that. Those are two things for the next meetings. Mr. Manager, you and I discussed this. I know that you do like the reporter concern feature. I do think the reporter concern feature is a good feature for residents. However, I do believe it's counterproductive when they just go unanswered. I have 11 open that are in progress from last July, three of them from last August, four of them from last September. So if, I have an equal say as every other resident here, but if I'm submitting reported concerns and they're sitting there for six months, what do you think's happening with the average resident? And I think you need to figure out or find out which departments are not, are not using it. Just in case you want it, here it is right here, all my open ones, July, August, September.
I don't know how to, and I have to find out, and I'll find out before the next meeting.
I mean, this shouldn't have worked out a year and a half ago when we went live, would it?
If there's, if they address the concern and there's a court date, but the court date doesn't come up, the concern is still open because of the court date.
So the average resident would think that nobody's doing anything. So there should be, there's a way to communicate. I know there's a way to send an email and update.
That's, before the next council meeting, I'll have that answered for you.
So keeping going down my list, I know we talked today about rats. I know last year we ran out of a rat budget. Residents on Brighton and Mill are already complaining again because the new garbage company is providing undersized containers, which means that garbage is going on the ground, and the containers they have provided don't have lids on them, which leads to a further rat infestation. So if we don't have our budget for rats yet this year, or I guess we did probably reset, we have to start baiting in that area, I guess. Besides, I know we talked today about the shuttle bus. I don't know why the shuttle bus stopped going to Clifton when that was a big positive to seniors, but now it's all.
It was strictly a pandemic.
Pandemic existed more in Clifton. Mobile, mobile, motor vehicle mobile unit. I talked to the clerk's office today. Three residents reached out wanting the mobile. They see Nutley's getting it. We don't have a contact, and maybe somebody call Ms. Petucci and find out? Did that. Okay, we are submitted for that. Okay, all right, now I can get to the rest of it. So easy stuff now. Recent events, we had rabies vaccination. It was packed morning and afternoon, four hours at the firehouse. We also used the time, I should say, I used the time to promote our new dog park. Shocking how many residents that have dogs in Bellevue still don't know that we have a dog park. So I was glad that we were able to go there and tell them that. Other recent events we had, the Irish flag raising on St. Patrick's Day. Upcoming events, as you heard the manager mention, April 9th is gonna be our Easter event. Those events have been very, very popular as of late. Altamont side of street parking does resume on April 4th. The SS County Cherry Blossom Festival is always big, brings a big influx of tourists to our area, substantial economic boom to our restaurants and some more business owners. It's about eight days long. The 10K run is in there, the festival's in there. A lot of great events. I believe we posted some of the events on our website today. A lot of great things to do for kids. You should definitely check out our website to find out everything going on with that. And then the library has a ton of things happening tonight. If we get out of here by 7 o'clock, you can learn all about Bitcoin and cryptocurrency. There's Storytime with Vlad and Deputy Mayor DePena. National Library Week is April 3rd. And we've got chess coming back, which is really good. Bunch of ESL-type classes, if you're interested in that, beginner, intermediate, and conversational. MMA Club, S A T Press, a lot of great things happening in our library. Feel free to check out the library website and/or social media. News, spoke with Congressman Series's office. I've sent them three emails, I think they're on communication today. For the residents who I always say, I feel your frustration when you don't get answers, I sent three emails. And today, I finally got a call back. Went back and forth with one of his liaisons. Even got a call from Chief of Staff today. We're looking to obtain money from the infrastructure bill for lead line replacements. That would be a $38 million investment, which is 50% of our municipal budget, something we just can't do. So I'm looking for them to come up big for us with some money. We are transitioning away from Congressman Series and transitioning to Mikey Sherrill. And I've already had a conversation with her. We're actually going to dinner in a couple of weeks, taking her on a tour of Bellevue. And she already knows that our major ask is lead line replacement. She just delivered, I think, a half million dollars from Bluefield, which doesn't get you much, by the way, but it is something. So that's something that we're doing. Yesterday, we had a really good conversation and meeting with the 12-acre property right next to Walter Kitty. So you got 12 acres being redeveloped there, you got 24 acres being redeveloped next door. These are ratables that we never had before that are gonna be good, clean ratables. We also had a meeting with, I think Councilman Cosarelli was there with the Purple Heart, our Purple Heart vets. That's up, should be up maybe on my social media. We should get it on the town social media. We're trying to raise them about $10,000 to $11,000 to pay for that Purple Heart monument that's now living at the Veterans Memorial. There will be GoFundMe donations, any civic associations could certainly do that. We saw some pictures this past week of Starbucks finally coming out of the ground. We're very proud of that. State DOT has been here on Washington Avenue. If you were following along last week with some of the exchanges, again, the residents who I always say, I write constant emails, I follow up constant emails, I write more emails. Sometimes I just need to show it. I just need to show people that I'm actually trying and then give them the answers. They did come out for a temporary patch, okay. It's gotta get better. They keep holding us off for the $12 million or $13 million project that's coming. Schools, last week in the news, $8 million more in funding. We recently cut the ribbon at the Belmont Project. That's a great project, taking a former blighted, contaminated area, remediating it to residential NJDEP standards, throwing a windfall of money and revenue to our budget. And it's also spurring economic growth and development elsewhere. We just got a $300,000 grant to fix handicap accessibility, pedestrian accessibility at the Light Rail, which is right next to Rod. These projects, once you clean up a blighted area, it's contagious. It's a reverse of the broken window theory. Once you develop something and you make it nice, other things start looking really nice. Registration is open for arts and crafts, ages five to fifteen, sixteen. Applications are now open for the 2022 Community Guarded. Applications are now open for Bellevue Police Department's Junior Police Academy. It's a great academy. I really wish they could do it all summer long. I'm always there at the graduation. Kids love it. Kids don't look at their phones, they do push-ups, they run, something you don't see kids doing anymore. But that is a great, great program. I know parents that have had kids in that program often say, can we extend the ages so their kids can stay in it? Lastly, Bellevue was recognized for its health initiatives by the statewide mayor's wellness campaign. Bellevue is one of only seven municipalities in the state to receive the Healthy Town designation to watch. That's it, a lot of good things happening. Next item on our agenda is approval of amendments.
We're having a meeting on June 22nd.
The motion?
Motion.
Second.
The motion made in second, clerk for the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
Communications.
A, emails received from Mayor Melvin dated March 10, 2022, July 12, 2021, and December 6, 2021, to Congressman Series requesting help with the lead line replacement project with Talentsville. B, recommendation received from Planning Board of Talentsville for the pending zoning ordinance. C, received from the Bellevue Zone Board of Adjustment, there are 2021 annual reports. D, request received from St. Anthony's Church for permission to conduct their annual feast on May 22nd, 21st, 20th, 21st, and 22nd, sorry about that. A, procession through the streets on May 22nd and for the vendor fees to be waived. E, letter received from Roast Edo Esquire Planning Board Attorney regarding the Board's recommendation to declare the Bellevue Industrial Center a condemnation area needed to be developed in. And F, letter received from the River of Life Church requesting permission to conduct their outdoor Easter worship service on Sunday, April 17th.
We don't really do much of those, most of them go to the police department to facilitate, everything else just.
Correct.
Means that we're okay with it. Ordances?
Ordance number one, for introduction, bond warrants providing for various capital improvements. They invite the town to Roosevelt and the county of Massachusetts, New Jersey, appropriating $14,972,000. Therefore, authorizing the issuance of $14,348,400 bond to notes of the township to finance part of the cost thereof.
Make a motion for introduction.
Second.
We have a motion made in second for introduction, clerk for the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Robel.
No.
Strumalberg?
No.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
Number two.
令数二，for introduction, bond warrants providing for joint municipal school facilities and invite the township of Bellevue and the county of Massachusetts, New Jersey, appropriating $12,500,000. Therefore, authorizing the issuance of $11,900,000 bond to note to the township to finance part of the cost thereof.
Need a motion?
Make a motion for introduction.
We have a motion made in second for introduction, clerk for the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Robel.
No.
Strumalberg?
No.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
Let the Director of Public Councilwoman, Deputy Mayor DePena, now enter the arena. Moving on to, we're good, right? We don't? Orders for public hearing, second and final adoption.
令数一，for public hearing,令数二，from Salem Township Home Company, not needed for public use, but by private sale pursuant to NJSA 4812-V.
Need a motion?
Open.
We need a motion to open public participation. We'll move. We have a motion made in second to open public participation, clerk for the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli. DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumalberg? Yes. Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
So we are public commenting on ordinance number one. 令数一，only for second reading. If you have any questions specifically about this ordinance, now would be the time to ask them just about this order. Mr. Frank Antoni.
Yeah, from my recollection, on that side of William Street, the south side, we have two properties there. One's a small lot, one's a bigger lot with the garages on it. Which one is this?
The small lot.
The small lot. We still own the other one?
I believe so.
What do we use it for?
Do not know. Manager, I'm assuming it's storing DPW equipment?
That's correct.
All right, and what do we?
The law, sorry, the police use it.
The what?
The police also use it for storage.
Okay, glad you didn't put the use, I had those steel doors put on, so, for security. And what do we ask them for this 45-foot street?
So we don't ask, we actually pay for an appraisal. I believe the appraisal came back at $65,000 once it's offered to either adjacent property owner. They also pay the price of the appraisal.
Is that the minimum bid?
I believe so.
Are you going out to auction, or is that just?
No, no, this. Since it's an undersized lot, it has to first.
Since it's an undersized lot, it has to be offered to the body of property.
Okay, from order first, right.
At the price that it's appraised at.
At that price.
Correct.
And then we go up to bid on it.
If we want to, usually, because it's an undersized lot, nobody's gonna bid on it. Usually, that's why the law is the way it is, because it allows, the only people that has any use for it usually is adjacent property owners. So because it's an undersized lot, it can't be built.
We have, got rid of three of them like that. Right, so they're hoping that adjacent property owners will take it.
Yep, correct.
If not, can we put it for employee parking, maybe, you know?
It's undersized, I don't think it, it's not valuable. Thank you.
Anybody else on this ordinance, this ordinance only? Drop.
Yeah, I just say it right here real quick. Pretty much 36 more plays.
Name and address for the order.
Yeah, just real quick.
Name and address for the order.
Excuse me?
Name and address.
Like you don't know, forget it.
I'm not the one taking the notes.
Like Kelly don't know, come on. Anyway, 36 more plays, 81721. Somebody bought it, that was a similar lot size, 23 by 101, $65,000, 47 Mount Pleasant Avenue, 72021, sold for $72,000. So I just wanted to give you some comps, that's within the last year.
Anybody else on this ordinance, this ordinance only? Hearing none, all entertaining motion to call, on the phone, anybody on the phone?
Anyone on the phone?
Hearing none, entertaining motion to close and move for final adoption.
Motion. Second.
The motion made in second to close and move for final adoption, clerk for the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli. DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Robel.
No.
Strumalberg?
No.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
令数二， approved.
I accept the $65,000.
Number two.
令数二，for public hearing, and令数三，to amend ordinance creating permanent positions and adopting reclassification compensation plans. This is for LIU supervisors.
Need a motion to open public?
Motion open public.
Second.
The motion made in second to open public commenting, clerk for the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
Public commenting on this, in this ordinance only. Mr. Frank Antoni.
Just a little comment, I looked at these salaries and all that, and then I googled Newark and some other big towns, and we're way over what those towns are paying. And I think Newark's a little bigger than Bellevue. So one of the reasons our taxes are very generous with our tax laws, with these salaries, with technology, I'm learning little by little. So a couple of clicks, I googled salaries in other big towns, way less than what we're paying.
Thank you. Mr. Frank Antoni's been around a long time. He does know that there's very little we can do about salaries. I'd say 2% raise every single year. You can't reduce the salary.
It's still my duty, but it's, let me tell you something. I sat in those chairs and I negotiated. And what we happened when we negotiated with the police back then, I refused to hire a labor attorney. We negotiated, I was on the committee with the mayor. Nutley hired and paid $38,000 to a labor attorney, and guess what? We got six, six, and seven, they got six, seven, and seven. So we got less than them, but you negotiate in good faith. If you know how to negotiate, you do some research, you don't just sit at a table and say, oh yeah, what do you want? Okay, we'll give it to you.
Mr. Iacono, can you give me?
We got less than Nutley got with a great labor attorney.
Thank you.
And paid them $38,000.
Thank you, Mr. Iacono.
You're not gonna get away with your phony lies, Mr. Mayor.
So I thought, lie, Mr. Iacono, can you give the facts?
Just a point of information, first and most important,[1615.84]
First, and most important, within the last three months, we settled with three unions, I'm sorry, four unions, at zero cost to any labor attorney. So, we didn't spend, we negotiated with four unions, we've signed four contracts, and we did not use any labor attorney, so.
Thank you for that fact.
That was a feather in everyone's cap. And as far as the increases, it represents a 2% increase.
Thank you. And my comment was about the salaries. While we have employees in active titles, we cannot reduce them. But what we can do is create new titles. Mr. Frank Antoni doesn't tell you that, that the starting salary for DPW and the starting salary for a clerk in this office have been cut by 25% by this council. We did that because we created new positions called a maintenance worker instead of a labor and a count clerk instead of clerk one, and shaved that by 25% starting salaries. You could only change a salary for a position nobody's in. Unfortunately, all the other slots are filled, and once we negotiate the contracts, whether it's a 1% or 2%, it just goes in automatically. Discussion.
Trials 95 Bell Street. What's the term of the contract? From what year to what year?
For this particular.
Yeah, this particular ordinance, yeah.
It represents two years. They were behind two years, so this represents 21 and 22.
21 and 22? Can you tell me why there's a, okay. You don't, all it tells me here, it doesn't tell me what steps they're at. Like here, administrative clerk, clerk four, $77,000 to $86,000. What is the range there? How did that person get there? Can you put that person at the top range when you hired him immediately? That's my question. Then I'll tell you why.
So, these are civil service positions.
Yeah, I know, but look at the range. There's a $10,000 range.
That is correct.
Why?
Because the way the contract, and the way the contract is written, and the bargaining unit written, is the annual steps. So, if the range, as just an example, if the range is, say, between 50 and 60,000, a person that comes in at 50,000 for year one, on year two gets a step, and there's usually five steps.
I'll tell you, I, there's a handful of them here. When I look at somebody here, I'm not even going to mention their title, but they only get an increment of $1,000. Some of them are getting $9,000. It's like, to me, it's like selective people that are getting more than anybody else, because when I compare this to the police and firemen, I mean, I mean, it's not, it doesn't justify what you're giving the cops and firemen for 104,000, 106, $2,000 in steps. But it annoys the hell out of me that it's being, to me, it looks like it's being selected for particular individuals, but I don't think this contract is fair. It's not fair for the cops and firemen, the way I'm reading this here.
Anybody else on this ordinance, this ordinance only? Nope. I'll entertain a motion to. Phone.
Anyone on the phone?
No one. So, let's just do a motion to close, because then we need discussion. I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePany?
Yes.
Frasiano?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes. Interestingly, nobody that cares about salaries and increases saw that there was an extra $17,000 slot for a zoning officer. That must have slipped Mr. Dros and Mr. Frank Antoni, but there is. But we're going to actually eliminate that from this, only because we're going to fix it in a subsequent, probably next meeting. Commander?
Yeah, that's correct. We just have to identify the correct title. Salaries stay in the same, so it's 17,000, but the title is, the title that we're using now is not.
My salary's a new salary, but it's a wash for a prior part of my basic. So, that is a new, a new salary, a new title. So, anybody that was trying to pay attention to what's in this ordinance would have seen that. But we're going to, I'm going to entertain, I'm going to ask for a motion to move this for adoption, with the exception of zoning officer. And later on in the meeting, you're going to see us probably table or defeat a resolution in the same category, and we're going to make it right in a future meeting. Good? Okay.
Yes.
You want to make the motion?
Make a motion.
Motion two.
Second.
Move this.
Move this. Take, remove this out of this.
Okay. We have a motion made, as I stated.
Just remove that one thing.
Remove that one thing.
Yeah, that one category.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Yes.
Yes, we do. We have a motion made, we have a second. Clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePany?
Yes.
Frasiano?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes. Orders number three.
Now, we have to move it as amended.
Yes.
Need a motion to move it as amended. Now, we need a motion to move it, that was a motion to amend it.
That was the motion to.
Now, we're going to have that.
Now, we're going to move it as amended without it.
Make a motion, second. Motion made in second, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePany?
Yes.
Frasiano?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
Orders number three for public hearing, and orders creating personnel positions and adopting classification compensation plans.
We need a motion to open public commenting?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to open public commenting, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePany?
Yes.
Frasiano?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes. We are public commenting for this ordinance, and this ordinance only. Mr. Frank Antoni.
My same comments as the previous ordinance, and just want to remind you, Mayor, the $17,000 you were talking about, you voted for that years ago. You know, then you criticized something that you voted for, and I'd just like to note, we're lucky. We're lucky the town clerk knows the law.
Thank you. The law is also, we're going to talk on this ordinance, and this ordinance only. Anybody else? No? Okay. Entertain a motion to, phone. Anybody on the phone?
Anyone on the phone? No mayor?
No. So, I guess we're going to do a motion to just close this, and then, or you want to move for final, is anybody going to? Let's just close it. All right, let's do a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to close public commenting, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePany?
Yes.
Frasiano?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
Make a motion to move for final adoption?
Second.
We have a motion made in second to move for final adoption, any discussion?
I'm just going to say, I'm going to abstain because of my son's.
That's why I was doing that.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion made, we have discussion, anybody else? If not, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePany?
Yes.
Frasiano?
Yes.
Robel?
Abstain.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
Orders number four for public hearing, and orders creating personal positions and adopting classification compensation plans.
Need a motion open public commenting? Motion open for public?
Second.
We have a motion made in second to open public commenting, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePany?
Yes.
Frasiano?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes. Public commenting on this ordinance, this ordinance only. Hearing none, entertain a motion, phone.
Anyone on the phone? No.
Motion to close and move for final adoption?
Second.
Any discussion on this, or just going to move it? Anybody? No? Okay. We have a motion to close and move for final adoption. Clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePany?
Yes.
Frasiano?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes. Public commenting. Need a motion to open public commenting?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to open public commenting, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePany?
Yes.
Frasiano?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes. Phones first.
Anyone on the phone? No one's on the phone.
Nobody's on the phone. We've now done phones, we're not going to circle back to phones.
We're not going to circle back to phones.
Anybody there, Mr. Frank Antoni? Just as I said, come up forward, make sure the microphone is on, so that you're naming address for the record, and you have five minutes to hopefully talk about township business.
Phyllis Frantial Tony, 129 Mount Prospect Avenue. I'm glad to see that the light is going to be going up in that parking lot, but I too was on, I was in contact with public service when this first happened, and the woman there was very, very helpful. And as far as the light down by Shubright, I was in contact with Meredith Hamm, and I was on the phone with her quite a while, and she was very receptive to what I had to say, and asked me to send her a letter, which I did, with all the information she wanted, because the project on Washington Avenue stalled to 2023. So, she said that she will see what can be done about putting the light in, and I hope to God that she does, because one day, maybe a couple months ago, I went shopping, pulled in a lot, and there was another accident there, another backup car. So, hopefully, before somebody gets killed there, that that light will be installed, but she was very, very helpful. Anytime I called her, she has answered the phone and spoke to me directly. No emails, no anything directly to her, so she really was good. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public commenting? Stand.
Gary Hinton, 307 Fairway Avenue.
Thank you.
This here, paper that we issued from you.
Yeah, you can hear the microphone?
That's with the housing mitigation team. Okay. Did you send this first?
I, if I, I got to see it, I really don't know. County reports? Yeah.
Okay, so, the names on there, the administrators, oh, two of them are retired over two years. The third one.
Their title still stays, so who's ever in that title with? It's the OEM, so who's ever in the OEM?
I'd like to get an updated one. D. Lorenzo doesn't know that he's on that.
The manager can probably inform him of that.
And I just hope that you can straighten that out with the people who are on it, and let them go to their codes. Code 22-1, mandatory organization, and I brought this up to Matthew, and said, break it down shorter, instead of reading this whole thing to you, legislate, put their authority on the municipalities to act on the flood mitigation. There hasn't been, so, we know that they never pulled any permits in Bloomfield, in Bellevue, the soil conservation, Essex County, and Verden, never pulled nothing from them, never pulled nothing from the DDP, so we passed all of that. They keep filling in that graveyard, and now it's diverting the water towards Fairway Avenue residents, making the water high. I hope that you can get this team going, and get on board, and put a cease and desist order in for the graveyard, so they stop putting graves in that area until this here is finalized, what they're going to do, what happens, they're going to take. Instead of letting them put graves in, and then you have to dig up graves and move graves. So, I hope that you can narrow it down, and have the authority according to the statute, and I hope you appoint people to it, and get this moving. I'm meeting with Tom Hertz next week.
There was a meeting also this morning.
A man this morning to come over with me, and one specific area that was concerned was, we're diverting the water over to the residents. I hope that you finally narrow it down, and keep it in Bellevue. You don't have to worry about this thing, if you look up in statutes, when you need to fill, you know that.
Anybody else for public commenting?
Sorry, about? Rich Fitting in 279 Fairway Avenue. They're still dealing with, as you know, flood damage on Fairway. Today, around noon time, the golf course started moving dirt. Behind my house now, I have a five-foot tall berm built from my house to the property on both sides of it. It extends probably three properties. They're leaving gaps in this wall they're building with this dirt they've been digging up. So, now there's a gap between my house, 279, and 283, about 20 feet. Do you have any photos, sir?
If not, you can just take them and email the manager.
Okay. And also, they ended the wall along the pond, which they enlarged from about, about at least 20 feet wider and about another 20% longer, so it looks like a small lake now. I don't know what they hope to prove with that. But they extended the dirt that they've been piling up past 275, and they stopped there. But now, house at 271, if any flooding happens like it did with Ida, it's going to go right through that person's yard. The wall's going to divert the water that way. Plus, the house at 275, 283, it's going to take out his shed, his brand-new air conditioning, and my driveway. Now, they were just talking about dumping dirt, that's, you're not supposed to dump dirt on the landers. That's Bellevue property there. It's not Bloomfield. And we, me and one of the neighbors talked to the guys doing the work, saying, "Look, if you're going to put this dirt berm up, extend it so it connects." The guy says, "No, we're going to stop right here. There's a tree in the way." So, they said, "We can't do anything about it." So, they're making it worse, and it's all it's going to do is wash mud onto our property if there floods again, which it will.
Right. I know the manager's been in contact with the golf course. I know the manager's also had Bloomfield out there to inspect. We do have a report from them saying, at that time, they didn't see anything wrong, but I saw the manager taking notes, he seemed to have very reliable information. If you want to email me or the managers some photos tomorrow, I'm sure he'll take the next steps.
Sure. I will. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Out back down, 287 Fairway Avenue. I want to just, you know, I support everything Gary said, and also what Rich just said. The berm is, it goes from the Third River straight down to 271. All right? And that, it just makes no sense. I showed Anthony some pictures earlier today.
You do have a picture of?
Oh, yeah, everybody's up there. I took a video when I got home today.
Okay.
So, I sent the video, I think, to Anthony and to Steve. I'm sorry, I forgot to send, yeah, I'll send it to you. But, um, yeah, I mean, and they just, and they have the guys just packing it down, and then the front loader just doing what it's doing. So, it's really totally out of control. They need a cease and desist also. So, and it is all on Bellevue's side of the town line, which we had a lengthy discussion about who's responsible, and the.
Orders definitely.
Construction managers, who's doing what, and I affirm belief that the Bloomfield construction manager, who seemingly has control over, or whatever you want to call it, control over the, what's going on at the golf course, is not looking out for the best interest of the people, the residents of Fairway.
The good part about that is that we have, we already have him on the record, writing an email to the manager, but again, that, three or four weeks ago. Manager's taking notes today. We now, I think, know, and I've identified the team, between the township manager and the town engineer, construction official, which also serves as zoning officer, he's the one that issues permits, he's the one that can cease work, can stop work, he's also He's also the flood plan administrator. I think now the manager's got a pretty good grasp on at least what professionals we have at our disposal that can do that.
Right, because there was some confusion earlier about who's responsible, who can actually initiate the cease and desist order. So, you know, we asked him to also talk to the town council to see who's responsible for that. So I'm glad that was sorted out in the interim. But I also want to talk about the park. And you mentioned the basketball court, about eight feet or, I don't know, 10 feet?
Six and 10.
Six feet, six and 10, whatever the numbers are. Put it in the middle, eight and a half or whatever. But, um, who's the park for? What age group?
We don't, I don't believe we have age groups for the enjoyment of all other things.
The reason why I ask that, because the age group that goes in there from the hours, and I've written an email about this also, and, you know, late, you know, not late, late in the afternoon, I'll say, from 4 to 8, okay? Is not the people who are using the six-foot court, okay? They're not in there at that point. And they, and the ones that are coming that use the larger court are really problematic. The quality of life has changed radically since that park has been put in place. I have litter that I've never seen in my life, because it just blows out. And my house is, just happens to be right there. I had asked for an increase in patrols, and I'm sorry, Mark, isn't he? And he sent a car the next day. And again, my camera catches it. You know, I can tell you every hour that the police may go a 30-second round.
So we have our deputy chief here. I know he's representing the chief today. He's going to take notes. We also have our car's GPS. And I actually was speaking with the police officer Sunday, who was in the high school marking lot over by tennis courts. And he had just come from Fairway. And they sit there and they, you know, it's funny, because I just was at a community watch-type meeting at Bridgebrook. And Bridgebrook was complaining that they see police officers sitting a lot doing nothing. So it's, you know, we have residents that don't want them to just drive by for 30 seconds. And then we have other residents that see them sitting there, either as a deterrent, or to do a report, or to have some lunch, or have coffee.
They do sit there. Excuse me for interrupting you. They do sit there, but it's 10 o'clock in the morning. The only person in the park is me and my two dogs.
Okay, we have our deputy chief here to take notes.
All right, they do sit there during the daytime hours. It's that afternoon shift where you have the increased use of the park, where you should step up patrols and maybe you need to, you know, they have 10 people working the day shift. Maybe you need to put eight people on the day shift and 12 people on the evening shift. That's staff and coordination, and I think that needs to be addressed. But also, I mean, the garbage is just, I talked about the garbage pails, those plastic cans, the wind blows, the litter goes all over. It's not anybody's fault. Even if, I don't particularly think they're using the garbage cans, but if they are using them, they're not staying in there very long, because the wind blows, the garbage cans are open. And the community garden. Whose job is that?
Green Team, uh, Green Team, municipal Green Team.
Because that was broken into, I did send an email earlier, the shed was broken into.
We got that report just now.
You know, um, and all the wood was taken down, I guess, post-flood. People took it down and stuff like that. But now, the hose thing that was in there is in the middle of the community garden, and everything is just all over the place. And the doors are just swinging. And the gate is open. It was obviously kicked in. And not by the people using the tennis, the basketball courts that are using the six-foot court. All right, and the last leg of your life is the 10-foot basketball players, the ones who are using that side of the court, they come in with their cars, and, you know, they speed down the block. Maybe we need a speed bump to deter, to stop that from happening. Um, and then they got, the music was rattling my windows in my house. That I had to, I couldn't even hear the TV. And this man went up and down the block at least three or four times. And then when I looked out, out at the park, he gets out of his car, climbs the fence to the condos. And then comes back, climbs, and walks through the gate to come back, and then drives up a dented. All right? There's drug dealing going on there. This has been, you know, I've taken pictures, I've sent pictures.
The music and the drug deal, that's all policeman. You don't have to come to a council meeting to talk about that.
No, no, but I have, I'm taking it, I want it on record, because I did send emails on Mr. Schmidt, Officer Schmidt, or he may be. Schwinn? And I apologize again. You know, murdering his name. You know, he said, "Oh, report it," and, you know, "We'll send a car down." Well, by the time I reported, a car gets there, they're gone. The transaction is done. You know, and we have this nice new video center, I guess it is, where they have nice TVs and they watch things that go on. Maybe we need to put a camera in these parks to, um, to look at what's going on and catch these people, and then, of course, enforce them.
Thank you. I believe Councilman Treziano wants to say, I will say though about the litter. You know, I was on a rampage this weekend seeing litter at Number 7 School, and there was litter all over the place. And there's no garbage cans inside, there's only garbage cans outside. I already talked to Dr. Tomko about that. I talked with some of the board trustees. At that same day, somebody complained about Number, I'm sorry, Fairway Park. And thankfully, we actually have a Saturday, Saturday, Sunday crew in DPW. Never before did we ever have that. We always need to pay overtime for a flag-raising or some kind of an event. Now we have a Saturday crew with the manager. I was in contact with the manager on Sunday. He sent them up there to do it. Councilman?
So, so I do have a question. Being that you live there, what time does this go on till?
Till about 8:00 or 9:00.
Okay, so last, last meeting, if I may, last meeting, we had a conversation about process and putting dust, da-dum-da-dust, you know, rules around locking stuff up. So I know you weren't here. We brought a conversation. This just goes to what I've been saying, that we need rules. Others think we don't need to lock things up. But when it comes time after dark, things need to be locked.
There's not even a sign that says, you know, "Put your litter in the litter," you know, the garbage can.
Da-dum-da-dust, cameras are totally read.
The park closes at dusk.
The school, the school district is dealing with the same exact issues. And I think collectively, we're all going to come to the same solution very soon. All right, anybody else?
Mayor, real quick, uh, just, I just want to touch on the community garden real quick. Uh, this Saturday, we're actually doing a cleanup up there. Uh, so all volunteers that want to come, I know a lot of people bring up issues, and we appreciate, you know, because we don't see it all the time, we appreciate you telling us about the issues. But when we do these community events and these cleanups, it's the same small group that does them all. So it would be nice if, you know, some other people would show up, you know.
Saturday, what time?
Uh, let me ask Gabby. She's the boss.
Are you buying coffee and donuts?
Yeah.
Are you buying coffee and donuts?
I will buy that, yeah. Eight, nine, oh, she said, 9:00.
Anybody else in public comment? Mr. Fred Antoni?
I just had, I got a quick thing. Cal, could you check? I believe we have ordinances in place that kind of regulate the times and access. You know, I remember we did stuff years ago on the state.
The dusted door is in place. We have to enforce it.
That's really, that really comes down to enforcement, huh? The ordinance.
The dusted door is in place. We have to enforce the locking.
Locking, correct.
But there's nothing to lock. We need to go ahead and, we need to go ahead and put a gate there.
We have a post-notice. All right, we all know, we gotta.
But they're going there between daylight hours, between 3:00 and 8:00.
Okay.
That's what the problem is. You see the, you see the.
After school. Okay. Mr. Fred Antoni?
Yeah, I, I hate, Mr. Mayor, I hate to use my five minutes, but I got to correct you. You always make statements. If you just ignore the facts, that's fine. But if you know the facts and say the untruth, those are called lies. Now, I have a copy, you mentioned earlier, the letter to Congressman Sires. In the letter, you refer to the reservoir as the former reservoir. It's not the former reservoir. It is still the NORC reservoir being actively used. They just closed the open reservoir and built two, uh, 200,000 and 50,000-gallon underground tanks. It is still the NORC reservoir. You keep saying the former reservoir. That is a total untruth. So now you're not, no longer ignorant of facts I've just given to you. Also, you continue to say the Walter Kitty site for four decades, with no doubt, and tonight you said it again. You said, "These are new radibles we never had before." The Finkelsteins run a Goodyear Tire distribution business. They've got about different locations from Massachusetts to Delaware. Belville was one of their distribution sites for years and years, until a few years ago when the cleanup started. And we're getting over half a million dollars in taxes from them. So tonight, you tell the publics here, they don't know the truth, and you're saying, "New radibles we never had before." So you've got to start telling the truth. You're a young man. You have no pride in yourself, pride? Let's start telling the truth. Now, you've got the, um...
Just to set the record straight, 20 years ago, I was on the council. That was abandoned.
No, it wasn't. No, it wasn't.
They didn't propose a target? And a Walmart, and a Target, and a Lowe's there?
Well, Walmart actually signed the contract. I have the letter, I have the contract, I have the newspaper article. What happened? The state was slow in sending inspectors while they were doing the cleanup. It took too long, so then Walmart went to county. Lowe's then came in and signed the contract. The state's problem, when they would excavate a portion and correct it, you can't move to the next phase until you get state D.P. inspection. The state inspectors told Mr. Finkelstein they were 18 to 24 months behind. So here's the man trying to clean up the site. He can't go to the next stage until he waits for the state. That was the holdup. It wasn't a derelict piece of abandoned property that you keep saying.
We disagree with that.
But you can't disagree on the facts. Go to your tax assessor or tax collector and see what the taxes were being paid on it.
You have about two minutes left.
Yeah. Now you've got something else here. You talk about these salaries and that you reduce salaries and all that.
25%.
You gave, to lower them, you gave 12 or 13 employees, and I'm going to use the word bribe, what you put on, you used the word incentive. I have your documents. You and the council borrowed 1.9 million to get 13 employees off the payroll, so you would make this 2021 budget look smaller. I have every document on them. Some employees got a $38,000 bribe, some employees got 40-something thousand, so they would retire. So you could brag that you lowered salaries. You didn't. But you borrowed almost 2 million, which we, the taxpayers, have to pay to make your budget look. Also, when Mr. Iacono gave the Belville report a couple of meetings ago, I told you last year, you said you had to raise water rates because you owed 1.6 million to NORC. At the time, we were collecting under the old rates 4.4 million. I said, "You double them and triple them for businesses," thank you, "you're going to take in over 8 million." And I was correct. Mr. Iacono's report, you stood. Now, that's an extra 4 million, and we didn't come in with the final figure yet. So the $39 tax increase that you're bragging about, the water bills are a big portion of the value. My bills went up double. My poor old neighbor, who never used the minimum, always paid 24.50. You used, raised it 24.50 to $55. So now this poor lady called, I told you, it's not me. She called me, she thought I had leaked. So you hurt these seniors, you hurt every taxpayer, you hurt every businesses by using the Water Department, which is a separate part of the budget, so you could brag about a $39 tax increase.
Thank you, Mr. Fred Antoni.
Water bills are also tax increases. So please, start, have some self-tride and start telling the truth. You know, you go and that's the old German thing or whoever it was, tell a big lie long enough, people start to believe it.
Thank you, sir.
Start telling the truth.
Anybody else? Go right down the line, Mr. Dros.
Resolution number 8. I see you using that word again, redevelopment, when there's no need for that. We already discussed that in the past at the planning board meeting. There's already a five-year tax abatement on that for area rehabilitation. When Walter Kitty's getting a five-year, why should, why should the developer next door get it? You can give them a 10, 15, 20, 25, 30-year tax rate. To me, that you're being selective about developers when you're doing area redevelopment. We discussed that at the planning board meeting, which is on record. Town website. If I take any pictures off the town website, can I put them in political literature?
Maybe who owns them? Who took them? I'm not a attorney.
Well, first of all, you run the town website, correct?
I do not.
Your company, same thing. You own it, it's your company. And you want me to believe that you have nothing to do with it? Yeah, hello?
Nothing to do with it.
Okay. My question is, who owns the photos? The reason I'm bringing that is because you took photos off the town website and put them in political literature. You used St. Peter's, the church, without their permission, probably. I hope you did, in campaign literature.
Thank you. That was the endorsement of the Belville PBA?
Town property.
I'm asking what pictures it was. I don't.
Look on your own Facebook page and literature and everything. I'm just telling you, I looked it up on a town website, and those pictures are there, and they're in your campaign literature. CFO, I asked this question before, and I'm going to ask it again, and I'm going to keep asking it. I brought up the question about five properties. One on Board of Education on Franklin Avenue by Nutley Line. Brought up the one that their office is in on Union Avenue by Division. Brought up your office at 335. I brought up the old Zigzag, and I brought up 314 Washington. None of these properties, it appears, have CFOs. Why is the law not being enforced? Which goes, you're not going to give me the answer. So, Mr. Manager, the law says, the manager is accountable, the all departments, so it is up to you. How many times do we have to come here and question why these properties don't have a CFO? Do you run that office out of Union Avenue, the old Zigzag?
Old Zigzag, non-Union Avenue.
No, Zigzag.
Do you know of any CFOs that don't, aren't associated to me? Because I'm sure there's plenty of them. Or they're just the ones that about me care about.
But do you work out of Zigzag?
I'm there sometimes.
Yeah. But doesn't have a CFO? So how could you work there with the accountant?
It's not my, it's not my tenancy.
Yeah, because I know, because somebody sent me this. Yeah, I sometimes work out of a, out of a law firm at the old Zigzag, and they don't have a CFO. So why are you working out of there?
The manager should really get on top of that.
Yeah, manager, it's up to you. And don't let him, don't allow him to intimidate you.
I'm the one asking him to do it.
You can say what you want, because I don't believe you.
Thankfully, there's only a minute and a half left, Mayor.
No, I have more, because you gave somebody seven minutes, which I clocked. The last meeting, you had two people speak over 10 minutes, so I can go 30 seconds over.
That's fine.
Normally, I'm on time. So if I go a few minutes, a minute over.
Now you have a minute, 10 seconds left.
No, I don't. I've got more than that. One of you, there's an article, somebody else sent me a newspaper article, see pictures in here. It said you're going to put up a wall on Washington Avenue. Do you starve in that?
No.
You don't have, you change your mind about the, you know, it's very sad, because Ukraine is under siege. You know that, don't you? For the Belville, you and your team, with the developers, have Belville under siege.
Wow, thank you. Poetic. Anybody else? Mr. Sheldon?
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. I want to start off with a complaint about the time delay in getting OPA request processed. Since June of last year, the seven-day statutory period was reinstated. In particular, I submitted an OPA request on March 3rd. Here it is, 19 days later. Haven't even gotten, given the seven-day obligatory message that it's being worked upon, and more time would be needed. This particular OPA request, I had asked for all of the financials involving the water payment situation between the township and NORC. You may remember, in October of 2020, when you had the council meetings in the high school auditorium, there was a lot of public outrage about this rapid, rampant increase in water bills. I had subsequently asked for all the financials. I was getting a tranche of documents in a haphazard way. But after going through those and putting them in an organized manner and using Excel, I discovered that contrary to what you said, Mr. Millen, that Belville residents had not had any water rate increases since 2014. In fact, from 2014 to 2019, using this building's own records, water rates went up by almost 17%. So, so much for that. But I would, I would appreciate that particular OPA request. I had asked for all the water records from January 1st, 2019 to present, that they, that be honored as soon as possible. Next item, starting Saturday, March 12th, you banned me from your Facebook page completely. Can't post, can't read it. I'm sure you're aware, since you know everything about municipal law, that both the Fourth Circuit appellate court and the New Jersey Supreme Court have ruled that it is a violation of First Amendment rights for any public official to ban citizens. Even if you object to the comments they're making, to ban them from the Facebook page. Let me just write, read you a quick little thing from the, an ACLU article. It says, "One of the core purposes of the First Amendment is to allow people, regardless of their views, to hold the government accountable through expression. So if your elected representative has an official Facebook page where he or she invites comments, can he or she block you from commenting because you criticize their work? According to the federal appellate court, Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals, the answer is a sounding no." So you're not only a violation of a federal court ruling, but also a state ruling. And since Mr. Martino always does his homework, as he admittedly maintains, Judge Alberto Rivas in January 2019 in Ronco versus Rehman also similarly ruled that the mayor of that town, who was Mr. Rehman, had to not only reopen Facebook access, but give Mr. Ronco a full list of all of the people who had been banned and all of the emails that are, the Facebook posts that have been deleted. So I am, I already made that request, filed the official OPA request for you to turn over all that information. If you don't, I will also hire another attorney to litigate against you for this particular matter. Next thing I want to discuss here, Mr. Millen, I'm sure you're aware of a LLC, 314 Belville Realty LLC. You're aware of that?
Yes, not a question-and-answer theory, but make it clear.
All right, but you're, I'm assuming you're aware, because you are the, you're the principal behind that LLC. The reason I bring it up is that here, according to this deed, which is recently dated, the property at 314 Washington Avenue has been sold to your LLC. So you now have another vested financial interest in the property on Washington Avenue. In fact, you're now in the process of selling the building next door to the same individuals that are the providers, the whiskey priest. But what bothers me and concerns me a little bit.
Do you do a Belville business, Mr. Sheldon?
Ah, that's immaterial.
Personal attacks.
It's immaterial. Please don't interrupt. The building next door, I'm going to have a few extra seconds, because in all my previous comments here, you give me a little over four minutes, so I'm going to ask for an extra minute to reclaim some of the time you denied me. Your building next door has 6,390 square feet, and you're in the process of selling it, or assuming you're selling it, for $1.36 million. So that's $212, or $213 a square foot. Whereas 314 Washington Avenue, which you are in the process of purchasing, it has roughly the same square footage, 5,000 square feet. However, the negotiated price for that is 6,000, 675,000, or $136 a square foot. So here you have two buildings roughly the same size, same square footage, but your building, you're getting twice, almost twice per square foot than what you're paying for a property just up the road. So again, when I say quid pro quo, there's another example.
Thank you. Do you need to wrap up now?
I am almost finished. The last thing I'd want to mention here is I've had discussions now with several attorneys, including Mr. Cates. And they have all said the same thing in regard to the hiring of Mr. Martino, that when Mr. Martino was originally hired, because of your previous.
Frank, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Sheldon, you have your time.
I, I need 10 more seconds. Because of your previous business relationships with him, which go back at least 10 years prior, under New Jersey's municipal ethics laws, you should have never been allowed to participate in the hiring of Mr. Martino.
Anybody else in public comment?
You're a violation of yet another ethics law. And I would ask this counsel, just as you did to Mr. Kimball in November of 2000, to have a no-confidence vote and dismiss Mr. Martino for being hired under false pretenses.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in public comment?
Phil Millen, 16 Huckle Street. I'd like to know what justifies $17,600 for calendars. Won't fail at Nutley, they don't have them. My taxes are $16,000, so I, I basically paid for the calendars. I mean, what do you need them for? A lot of people I've talked to, they recycle them. When I paid my $490 water bill, the girl in the office said they detected a leak. So why don't they tell me? It's a leak. How about all the hundreds of other people that have these high water bills? How come I wasn't informed of that? I had to call a plumber. It's a silent leak, but they detected it in the town. That's a lot of extra money, a lot of wasted water, which goes to the town. I'd like to look into that basis.
Thank you. Anybody else? Question?
Good evening, criminal pleasure, Main Street. First of all, Mr. Iacono, the last meeting, the last several meetings, I've asked you about the light on Jerome and Union. Am I right?
Yes.
And the standard answer that I've received from you is you've sent an email, you've never received any communications. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'd have to refresh my memory on that.
Okay, let me refresh your memory. I made a phone call, and an hour later. I made a phone call and an hour later, I got a phone call back from the county. If I can get a phone call back in an hour, how come you guys can't get an answer in three to four to five months? I got a phone call back and the gentleman I spoke to, Mr. Mohammed, very nice gentleman, gave me the standard political answer, I understand that they would have to do a survey, a traffic survey and the police survey, which is fine. I kind of knew the answer to it, but I wanted an answer from somebody. I can make a phone call in an hour and to their recollection, they have not received any communication from this town about that, when I've asked for it past several meetings. So again, I don't like to call people untruth. I don't like to use that word, as my dad used to say, you know, creatively telling the truth. But if you're going to say to people that you're doing all these things, have the gumption and have the moxie and have the decency to say, "Look, I messed up, I didn't send the email." Things happen in life, we all understand things happen. But again, if I can get a phone call back in an hour, I find that really hard to believe that you guys can't get an answer in three or four, several months. That's number one. Number two, as we were coming in tonight, we saw the brush and the debris on 21. That's all being cleared away. It looks like the, you know, and I understand 21 is the state, you know. So, but now the rest of it is on our side and on Main and I, as I've discovered, Main is our town, is our street to clean, so if we can look into that, okay?
So you're close, sort of, but I don't make phone calls, because I like to send emails, so there's a record of it. I have been in contact with the state, they will come and clean Main Street. They will clean that part of Main Street that's in between Main Street and 21.
Right, I know, no, no, I understand where they're going to be cleaning.
Okay.
Where I'm looking at is Main Street, is our Main Street. And again, I make a phone call, you know. God bless you, you have communication and email, God bless you.
I just like, because there's a record of it.
I like making phone calls, I like yelling at people, as you know. But again, I'm talking the garbage on Main Street and I'm talking about all of the post office nonsense, all of those bins that one of these days I'm going to get out of my car and throw them back into the parking lot. Because there's got to be 30 bins of mail, of the empty mail bins, that are just sitting there rotting, God knows, collecting what underneath. So it's the nice spring, summer, so let's get cleaning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Entertaining motion to close public comment. One more.
I wasn't going to do that. This room looks so much bigger on TV. I just, a reminder, we got Cedar Hill Avenue, we have a huge problem on Cedar Hill Avenue. I'm asking you not to fix it, so people keep bottoming out when they go 50 miles an hour up the street. That's one. Second, Direct Center, they do a lovely job. I know I've talked to a lot of people about charging and I know no council wants to be the first one to charge. I would like to suggest with the Board of Ed, just, they're putting in a new facility down on Cortland. Also, I don't know about the facility we have on Magnolia, but maybe adult leagues might be a great way to get revenue down. As a softball coach, we are losing talent to travel teams. It's happening all across the country. It's not just us, you get a girl that's nine years old and decides to play for the first time, she's so far behind that they end up just standing in the outfield and standing there for two hours, not doing anything, not having fun. So if we could get more, some way to get funding now, to get more help, maybe use high school kids to help us, get kids, partner with them, that would be awesome. Because I hate to see, you know, the next Jenny Finch not become the next Jenny Finch, because she started at nine years old and couldn't get on a travel team, right? I want to thank Mr. Sheldon for informing me about that whole thing about not blocking people on social media, because it's awesome, I didn't know that. I've been blocked by two of the council members and I wasn't going to do this, my wife said, "Don't say anything." But I personally work for a distributor. We supply smoke shops, cannabis shops. And I was a little disturbed to find out one of our council people didn't know that cannabis was voted legal in this state in 2020. It was a huge thing by Governor Murphy. Some of these shops are immaculate, they are so well-run, they are run by, and in the last six months, I've met a world of different people, from every ethnic background you could imagine, I have all of New York and New Jersey, all the way up to Buffalo, all the way down the shore. And some of these people are amazing people. And the things I'm hearing, like some of the words I heard today are just like, like when you hear little things like "these people," these are little trigger words for me, that are really, really upsetting. And I'm shaking a little bit, I didn't want to do this, my wife's getting pissed, I hope she's not watching. But I was here last week and three of the council members voted against bringing in legal business to town. And then I tried to mention it on their social media and obviously I was blocked, because I can't get an answer. So I'm going to answer tonight. I think one person said, because we shouldn't have park businesses in this town, cannabis has, I could go into the details on how, I'm not going to do that now, if you'd like to know, I'll go into that later. But it's business and it's a revenue stream that's coming into town and it's going all over the place. We have people complaining that there's drug dealers on Fairway Avenue. Hell, let's make, let's have legal places for people to buy on Washington Avenue, okay? And then one council person, one council person, I could be loud, I could talk over everybody. And one person on this council said that they're voting against it because they don't know the appearance of the people that applied for this, for the license. And I just am curious, where on the form, I've never applied for a business in Belleville, so I'm curious, where on the form is appearance? And exactly what is the appearance that we're looking for on someone that's voting on, someone that's being licensed for a legitimate business in town? What exactly is the appearance they're looking for? Do I fit the appearance? Would my father fit the appearance? Would a lot of the Arab and the Egyptian men that run these companies, would they fit the appearance? That's all I want to say, you know, where I come from, there's two types of, I don't want to call anybody any names, but it's something that we call low-key in my community. And low-key is worse than being blatant, blatant, out and out against people. You want to be blatant, be blatant, I'd rather someone be blatant than lie to me in front of my face and talk behind my back. All right? I will never do that, but that is low-key when you say, "What is their appearance?" So that's all, it's a trigger word, it really upset me when I left here. I wanted to come up and speak to the person individually, but they weren't here last month. You know, and it's confusing me also, because I believe they weren't here when they actually voted to allow the businesses in town. So, you know, maybe if we sit in these seats a little bit more, we'll have a better understanding, all right? Close that, five minutes on the note, that is it.
The chair, I have a response. Hey, Rue, hey, Rue.
Yeah.
Come on up here. The appearance was the appearance of a resolution or an ordinance on here when we need to see it.
Not what you said.
Well, that's what I meant.
Well, what you meant and what you said are two different things.
I want to clarify.
Please do.
Because the same thing happened tonight. Things appear on our agenda, appear on our agenda and we don't get to really review them or meet these people or see these things. That's what I was talking about, because we don't have the opportunity to really assess properly what's going on.
So can you tell me another time when you questioned the appearance of a business?
It would be irresponsible of me to vote on something I know nothing about. And that's what happened again tonight with these particular items.
Ruben, I think we-
That's what I'm trying to say.
So then, my issue though with that was, we vote on liquor licenses all the time. We don't know what they look like.
But who met with these people?
And I think you voted to legalize it in town, but then have people do the hard work.
So you understand something too, it still fits the law federally, so you-
Okay, so what is, so now that being, you voted, so call Governor Murphy, he's like, why did he say this?
I understand something. I think that we need to find a way to generate revenue, definitely.
I personally voted against legalization, if you want to do.
I can't vote, I can't vote for stuff like this anymore, I've been told not to, so, you know.
You've been told not to vote for something.
I work for the federal government, that's the problem.
I think everybody's on the record, I can't have a back and forth, I think, Councilman, I think you said your piece, unless you have anything else to say.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
I'm going to entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close, thank you.
We have a motion made in second to close public comment, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosrelli. DePena?
Yes.
Resiana?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes. Resolutions.
I'm going to pull one, seven, eight. Nine and ten, I think I already did, even though I didn't.
I'm sorry, we'll hit those.
One, seven and eight.
That's it. One, seven and eight, anybody else?
Okay.
Three, you want to lock the same ones? All right, I'm going to entertain a motion to move the consent agenda.
So move.
We have a motion made in second, we have a motion made in second to move the consent agenda, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosrelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Resiana?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes. Resolution number one.
I just, you know, I think there's a couple things that you should look at.
Yeah, I got to pull two check numbers, three, five, two and six, nine, three, please.
Say it again?
Three, five, two, six and six, nine, three.
Six, nine, three.
Yeah, so I'll stay for those two.
And I'm just looking for clarification on six, eight, two, one, I think it is, it's Jaffe Communications. I know we went out for an RFP or an R, whatever, it's an RFP, RQ. And I'm just wondering, whatever happened with that, who was the lone bidder? Is this paying for last month or is it paying for this month? What is that? Somebody explain that to me?
Okay, so we did go out for proposals, we received, three, Kelly? We received three. We just didn't put them on the agenda to be reviewed by the committee. I don't think there's any reason why we shouldn't do it for the next meeting. So we did get three proposals.
So that this contract expired?
What committee is that? Reviewed by the committee, you said?
The council.
Didn't use the word committee?
You did.
By the council. Committee by the council.
Oh, reviewed by the council. Right, yeah, committee, okay, I'm sorry.
You did.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. Town Attorney Court. Thank you, sir, I apologize. So we did receive three and we just didn't get around to presenting them to the council.
So did this contract expire or is it?
The Jaffe contract did expire in 2021, December 31st, I believe.
Correct.
That's correct, so come on, come on.
So we're going to muck them up now, as soon as?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Counselor, we'll put those on, put in agenda.
Yes, they're welcome.
Finney, what are those checks?
Three, five, two, six, nine, three, just for, he's got to take that one, get both of them. Yeah.
Okay, so you're going to vote yes, but I'm staying on those two, is that how we're doing it? Okay, we have a, we had discussion, let's do a motion to move it now.
So move.
We have a motion made in second to move number one, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosrelli.
Yes.
Resiana?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Councilmember Robel.
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes. Ordinance number seven. Yes, I'm sorry, resolution number seven. As I mentioned, when we did the salary ordinances, we pulled the $17,000. We're also pulling this one and will reemerge probably next meeting. So, motion table in second, no more discussion, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosrelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Resiana?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes, so that'll, you're on the next agenda, is table?
Yes, of course.
Number eight.
Number eight.
Number eight, hold on.
Number eight.
Number eight, hold on, hold on.
No, no, okay. We won't vote on it then either, because we're going to introduce a new ordinance, so. It's going to be tabled.
It'll stay on the table. It'll stay on the table until the other one gets passed, yeah.
Right, well, that's what we meant, it'll sit there.
Yeah, it'll sit there.
Well, I just didn't want to misrepresent it.
So we're going to pass it next time?
No, tabled, tabled next meeting. Resolution number eight.
I just want to roll call.
Okay.
Motion.
No other discussion, we have a motion made to move it. Yep, I have a second to move it.
Second.
Yep. Motion made in second, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosrelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Resiana?
Yes.
Robel?
No.
Schumelberg?
No.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes. Next item is new business.
Through the chair. Kel, I know we had talked about this many times, about things appearing on the agenda late and especially, some of the stuff actually appeared before we even got here tonight. So we never had a chance to review it. And I know sometimes we have to do that because it's an emergency and other stuff, but I'd appreciate if we try to get stuff out a little earlier or by, I think we used to target Friday.
Friday afternoon.
Anything later than Friday gets passed to the next agenda, so that we have time to review it.
Totally understand, totally agree. Point of emphasis, we try to keep to a very tight Friday deadline. Two introductions only, we're time-sensitive, time of the essence and one, actually both, unfortunately, Bond Council.
Said you had to do it.
No, Bond Council was out with COVID. And thank God he's back, healthy, back to work. But he only got back to work, I think, on Friday, so that's-
And the rest are going up too.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. That's new business.
Just one last quick thing, did we ever get any feedback on the crosswalk of going across Franklin Ave with that light?
Yeah, we talked with-
Yeah, Tom Harris.
Yeah, we, yeah, me and myself and the manager talked with the town engineer for that one end on Bellville Avenue.
Right.
And he's putting the, we're responsible, even though the county did that originally, we're responsible moving forward for all the repairs and whatever, so Tom Harris is ordering that stuff. So, I don't know when it'll come in, but it's on route.
Good, thank you.
Unfortunately, now we have our executive session portion of the meeting, we used to do it at the beginning of the meeting. No action, I'm going to entertain in a minute a motion to go into executive session. We do have to clear the room, no action will be taken when we go into executive session. Once we end executive session, the public meeting will resume, but that will be only to adjourn the meeting. We will not take any action even after executive session, with the only exception being a motion to close. You're more than willing to stay outside if you want and come back in to hear the motion to close, but we're telling you, no action will be taken in executive, no action will be taken afterwards.
Hey Dad, can I have your keys?
Oh, yeah, motion to go, uh-
We need a motion to go-
Motion to go executive? Yeah. Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to go pee. We won't lock you out, I promise.